Please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mandy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Here.
Raynor.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Vince Ryan.
Here.
Hoffman and exit.
All right, can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Wayne Seenshaw to serve another term on the Community Development Committee. Wayne has served on the CDC since 2003 and has attended nineteen of twenty-six meetings held during his term. If approved, Wayne's new term would expire on August first, 2027. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Kristi Vannevoort to serve another term on the Community Development Committee. Kristi has served on the CDC since 2021 and has attended twenty-two of the twenty-six meetings held during her term. If approved, Kristi's new term would expire on August one, 2027. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Vince Ryan, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Bob Zylster to the Community Development Committee. Bob was appointed to fill a vacancy in November of 2023 and attended four of the six meetings held during that term. If approved, Bob's new term would expire on August one, 2027. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Hopkins, Brandon Horace, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, we have opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address counsel regarding any agenda item, please step forward with a microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Vince Ryan, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. We're going to a public hearing regarding Tulip Torn renovation project bids, Mike?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. For those in attendance and those watching at home on Pella Fiber, I'd like to direct your attention to the debate board for presentation on this item. Mayor DeWort stated what's in this public hearing as regards this proposed Tulip Torn renovation project. And before we get started on the project, Janette, could you just please give a brief summary on the proposed repairs to the Tulip Torn?
Sure, the, the project is... I'm kidding. The project includes both structural and aesthetic work. As far as structural, they'll be doing a lot of work on tearing out some concrete at the base of the pillars that have settled, recording that. There's some beams exposed underneath that will need work. And we have a lot of water infiltration into the base of the Tulip Torn, so we'll be doing some, um, some work to kind of slow that down a little bit, get water sloped away from that a little more. And then the entire structure will be cleaned and painted.
Thank you. Now, as far as the bid letting is concerned, we did have three bid lettings. And it's also important to note that all three bids were received by the city. However, there was an irregularity that was a clerical error that we did believe does not materially impact the bid procedures that were already to go over. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the project is concerned, we did have three bids. What was responsible bidder was $291,900. And the high bid on the project was $329,000. Now, the good news is all three of them were below the engineer's estimate of $355,000. The bad news is the project budget is $169,000 for this project. Um, after a financial review, we believe that the city has sufficient cash reserves in our local auction fund to go ahead and fund the project at the $292,000. So that would be the most responsible bidder on this. Now, as far as the engineer's recommendation this evening, Pella's Design Services is recommending awarding the contractor to Pullman. Staff is in agreement with the recommendation. And council order to approve this resolution, the work would proceed this fall. And the final completion date for the project is targeted for November 24th of this year. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation.
All right, thank you, Mike. Mandy, any written comments?
No written comments.
Counsel, any comments on this project?
He is pulling.
Once again, I'd like to refer the question back to our community services director, Jeanette Vaughn.
They're down out of the Kansas City area. They, um, they do a lot of concrete structure type work, restoration work on like parking garages and, um, older buildings and that type of thing. So a lot of the right same type of work.
Anything else, counsel? Anybody out there have a comment about this project? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
DeYoung, Vince Ryan, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the resolution number six, seven, three, one, entitled Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Costs, Receiving of Bids and Making Award of Contract for the Tulip Torn Renovation Project. I have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Support.
Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussions? I don't think he had anything to add.
It is correct.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Uh, we were scheduled for a public hearing regarding the proposed development agreement with Corrigan's Land Holding out in the sea. Uh, we are postponing that?
That is correct.
Or do we need to postpone that till August 20? So do I have a motion to continue this public hearing to the next regular council meeting on August 20th?
Support.
Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number six, seven, one, nine, entitled Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Costs, Receiving of Bids and Making Award of Contract for the West Ninth Street Improvements Project, Mike?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor DeWort stated what this resolution would do, was award the contract for the proposed West Ninth Street Improvement Project. Orientate everyone, Washington Street is located right here to the south. The green highlighted area on West Ninth Street is the area where the proposed road improvement would be at. Now, if you were to go further to the east, what you would see is the Walmart Super Center. And the project commercial development that we have planned or the city has currently been planned is in the purple area. Now, as far as the project is concerned, we did receive four bids on the project. A little bidder was PK Concrete and just over $323,000. The high bid on the project was at $394,000. The engineer's estimate on the project was at $384,000. Now, it is very important to note, we've continued the award of this contract for the last two council meetings. Staff has received confirmation from the Pella Retail Management Group that they are in the process of hiring a local contractor to perform sanitary sewer extension that will be along Washington Street, that will be a hundred percent at the developer's cost as well. And they are planning on initiating the project and that would be the commercial development. And what's proposed for the commercial development would be the new Starbucks that's, that's being planned, as well as the key mobile office on the commercial development. They're planning to initiate the project within thirty days is what they've informed staff on this. So with that, Mr. Mayor, our recommendation is to approve the, approve the resolution, proceed with the project this evening. Counsel order to approve this, we're hoping to have this job done within thirty-five working days, which likely means it will be completed sometime this fall, hopefully, if everything goes smoothly. Lack, lack of range certainly help on this anyway. So with that, that completes the staff, uh, presentation on this item. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved. Support.
Hopkins, Vince Ryan. So the sanitary sewer and the street, does a sanitary sewer have to be done before any street work can be done?
Preferably, you know, if it's semi-local, we can talk about putting in a sixty-foot stick. And we got a garden involved, that's sometimes a little risky, but you know, we get backed up against wall with weather, that's something we could consider, but not desirable. Hopefully sanitary is done completely.
Are, is the sanitary going west or going down the, the new street?
It's coming west. From the east, from the southeast corner of Central Tire and across their property to the west. With a W in it. Gotcha. And the street will be open one way or another during the day. And, uh, but the digging is real close to the pavement, so.
For the sanitary sewer?
For the sanitary sewer.
On Washington Street.
On Washington, yeah. And there's, because there's a lot of utilities in there. We'd like to slide over, but it's just.
Okay, anything else?
Do weeds are gonna get knocked down?
They're, they're mowed.
They are?
Yeah. Went by there today.
Really?
Took a while.
That was a nice saw.
They're about four feet high. They were the last time I've been down there.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor of the resolution, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six, seven, three, two, entitled Resolution Declaring an Official Intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 to issue debt to reimburse city for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects, Mike?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the debate board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, what this resolution would do and it's, it's, um, would actually satisfy the U.S. Department of Treasury regulation, anytime you issue debt for projects, usually what's associated with a debt issue is a reimbursement resolution for the projects you are hoping to reimburse yourself or undertake with a debt issue. And in this case, uh, what we're proposing to do would be reimburse forth the rehabilitation work on pump, um, on, on a pump for well number two, and as well as a purchase of a backup pump as well. So this is closely associated with the debt issue that we are, that's on the agenda for this evening. That particular issue will be for it not to exceed $800,000 amount. So once again, this is a requirement from the United States Treasury for the reimbursement request to be able to issue tax exempt debt. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Brandon Horace, DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six, seven, three, three, entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing a Form of Loan Agreement and Authorizing and Providing for Issues of $800,000 of General Obligation Capital Loan Notes Series 2024A and Levy Tax to Pay Said Notes, Approval of Tax Exempt Certificate. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as far as the Mayor DeWort stated, what this resolution would do, it would authorize issuance of it not to exceed amount of $800,000 for general obligation, uh, capital loan notes. A little bit of background on why this resolution and why this bond issue is necessary. In 2023, our system had some unexpected repairs. Now, what we're proposing with this bond issue is to replenish the city's cash reserves that were used to fund some of these repairs that we undertook. Now, as far as the bond issue is concerned, Mandy, let's go ahead and cover the details of the bond issue. The loan amount would be for $800,000. The interest rate that we have on this with the local bank would be 4.42%. The term of the loan would be over fifteen years. It is important to note with the, with the loan, we have the ability to call the loan after six years on this as well. Now, even though this is general obligation, the loan notes or capital loan notes, it is important to note that we will be using water revenues to fund this debt service payment. So we do not anticipate issuing a tax levy to pay for the, for the debt service issue as well. Equally important to note, since we're doing a direct placement with the local bank for this project, we had our financial advisor do us an analysis if we were to seek to a public bid for a proposed bond issue on this. And ultimately, at the end of the day, what the analysis showed was that the proposed debt service would be roughly the same as we saw public bids on, for a bond issue going through the public bidding process for this, as opposed to the direct placement that was being proposed with this bond issue. So the last thing that we have on here is council order through this resolution, the closing for this bond issue would occur on August 22nd. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved. Support.
Vince Ryan. Was that Hopkins or...? Hopkins. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number six, seven, three, four, entitled Resolution Approving Engineering Service Agreement of Garden and Associates Limited for the Lincoln Street Improvement Project, Mike?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor DeWort stated, this resolution would approve an engineering services agreement of Garden and Associates for the Lincoln Street Improvements Project. Orientate everyone, what we're proposing is improvements to Lincoln Street. This would be between Houston and East Second Street. So it's the yellow highlighted area that we have up on the map. But we do have a description of the project as well. It is, includes street replacement as well as sanitary sewer. Now, the sanitary sewer is a key piece of this project as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the agreement that we're considering tonight, the total fees associated with the project is just under $149,000, or $140,000, excuse me. And the preliminary construction cost estimate we have for the projects are just over, is about $757,000. Now, if council were to proceed with the project, it is important to note that we are proposing to fund this via a general obligation bond issue for the project as well. And as far as the schedule, handedly, if we will proceed and are able to keep things on track, we're hoping to actually have this project initiated in the spring of 2025. So it'll be a summer of 2025 construction scheduled for the project. So that concludes the staff, uh, presentation. Mayor will be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved. Support.
Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six, seven, three, five, entitled Resolution Approving Engineering Service Agreement with Snyder and Associates for the West Washington Street and Iowa 163 Northbound Ramp Intersection Project, Mike?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor DeWort stated, we have another proposed engineering services agreement. This one with Snyder and Associates, as for planned improvements at the intersection of Washington Street and the North US Highway 163 Northbound Intersection that we have up on the map. Now, as council is aware, maybe for members of the public that are tuning in for the first time, if I can get my highlighter to work on this, it's not showing up tonight. We have a new Quick Star development that's being proposed at this location. The city did a traffic analysis on the project. And what's being proposed is turn lanes on Washington Street that would be shown as, shown up on the map as well as fully signalized intersection at this location. The overall cost of the project was roughly $965,000. And the city has a development agreement with Quick Star, where Quick Star would fund approximately half of the cost of the project. So the Knights Engineering Services Agreement, total amounts $178,000. The city's share of the project would be roughly $89,000 on this. Now, initially, the fund, um, the project would be funded, I think you do it, would be funded from a loan from the electric utility. And so just to orientate everyone, Highway 163 is right here, the Northbound Exit Ramp is located right here. The new Quick Star is being proposed, the loan would be located right here. And lean back, concludes the staff presentation this evening, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brandon Horace, Vince Ryan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six, seven, three, six, entitled Resolution Fixing Date for a Public Hearing on the Proposed Vacation of a Storm Sewer Easement and Overland Flowage Easement Located on Monttanum, the last line in the state subdivision, Mike?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And basically, all we're doing this evening is just establishing August 20th as the public hearing date on the vacation of a stormwater easement that the city has across this project. More details will be shared on August 20th for the project. But it is important to note that the property owner has built in a hundred percent of their cost through reviser and a new storm sewer. And so this easement is no longer necessary. They'll also be granting this an additional easement for where the storm sewer was relocated on the property. More details will follow during the public hearing on August 20th. But once again, all we're simply doing is setting and establishing August 20th as the public hearing for this proposed vacation.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Vince Ryan.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1044, entitled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Changing the Zoning Classification of Property Located North of the Highway T-15 and Highway G-28 Intersection, City of Pella, Marion County, Iowa. This is the second reading?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this, this request that we had this evening. As Mayor DeWort stated, would change the zoning classification for just roughly about thirty-nine acres of property. Orientate everyone, the proposed location is within this highlighted area that we have right here. County Road T-15 is located right up here in Washington Street, which turns into Highway G-28 is located right over here. Note for those who are even familiar, on the west side of town, the Prairie Ridge Development, the first phase of Prairie Ridge is located right over here. The FCon Development, which was approved earlier this year, uh, by council, will be located right over here. Chick-fil-A is located right here. Now, as far as the planned unit development, the rezoning change, what we have this evening, the key point to take in mind is the proposed rezoning is to facilitate a housing development that's being planned by the developers, roughly a ninety-unit housing development. Proposed homes are gonna look very similar to the current Prairie Ridge Development. And this is really Prairie Ridge Phase Two that's being proposed by the developer. So, Mandy, let's go ahead and we'll explain exactly what this planned unit development is as we go through the, the presentation. But in essence, anytime you hear, uh, anytime you hear the word planned unit development, what you're really talking about is a negotiated process between the city and the developer. And what this does is for those projects that meet key strategic priorities for the city of Pella, in this case, uh, the proposed development is for workforce housing. It's gonna be very similar to the intent of the original Prairie Ridge Development. What's being proposed by the developer is ninety housing units, uh, for the development. Now, the reason why this is a key strategic priority for the city of Pella is recently Marion County had a housing assessment that was conducted this year for the Pella market, and showed roughly twelve hundred housing units would be needed to be constructed in our community to meet housing demands through the year 2035. And our current comprehensive plan, housing was identified as a key strategic priority. So based off of the current, uh, comprehensive plan plus the Marion County Housing Assessment, we believe that this proposed development fits well into the planned unit development guidelines for, under the city code. Now, in exchange for those projects, we, remember, we said this is a negotiated process. What happens through this is the developer looks at the project, and there may be variances that are needed from the zoning side of things to be able to develop and, and build this type of project. And in this case, if you were to go out to the original Prairie Ridge Development, the original Prairie Ridge Development had lots on fifty and fifty-five foot wide lots. And there was roughly about six to seven variances that were needed on the original Prairie Ridge Development. This development will have lots roughly about sixty feet in width, but it's still gonna require variances, the same five to six variances. So as far as the negotiated process is concerned, in exchange for the variances which allow the project to proceed, the city has some of the benefits that we have as well. And in this case, if you recall, we said the intent of this development is to provide workforce housing for the community. Well, in this case, uh, we had a method or a formula that worked very well in the original Prairie Ridge Development. The original Prairie Ridge Development had a planned review committee that required, and it was made up of representatives from Marion County, the city of Pella, and the developer. Before the city could issue a building permit for the Prairie Ridge Development, planned review committee had to approve the plans for it. Uh, what we've seen and, uh, the city's representative for this is we have the design layout for the home, the layout of the home, as well as the sale price of the home. So that's a key element on this, is the sale price has to be approved by the committee. Unless it's a hundred percent or a unanimous approval, we cannot issue a building permit. So that's the mechanism that we've used to ensure that workforce housing is actually built out there. Now, as far as workforce housing, the average cost of Prairie Ridge First Phase was just at $306,000. We think that fits very well when you compare workforce housing prices to the Iowa Department of Economic Development. What they would tell you the sale price of the workforce housing is, is roughly that low $300,000 range. So what's being proposed in this planned unit development is continuation with the planned review committee. Since Marion County is not a part of this project, it will be the city of Pella and the developer will have a representative as well. So ultimately, it'll be the city of Pella's representative that will be required approval before building permits issued, and that includes the sale price of the home. So we have high confidence that this development will continue to be able to offer workforce housing for the city of Pella. It is important to note that the developer is proposing to extend Highway, or actually T-15 up north through the development. And openly, what's being proposed is that this would link up to West Sixteenth Street and the original Prairie Ridge Development for, at a future phase. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay. Now, in addition to the planned review committee, we also have design guidelines. These were the same design guidelines that we had for the original Prairie Ridge Development. And as you can see, that's gonna be a very nice housing development out there. The original Prairie Ridge Development has very nice housing as well. The original Prairie Ridge Development has very nice housing as well, so it'll be a continuation of Prairie Ridge. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, in summary, Mr. Mayor, staff believes that the proposed development meets the intent of the zoning code, and we also believe it aligns with the city's comprehensive plan, and we are recommending approval of the ordinance as submitted this evening. It is important to note that the finding that the zoning commission did consider this proposed ordinance at their June twenty-fourth meeting and unanimously approved the ordinance. With that, that concludes the staff's presentation.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Hopkins, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third requirement reading.
Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Move to adopt.
Support.
Motion to adopt ordinance number ten forty-four, Branderhorst, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion for approval of abstract bills number twenty-one fifty-six? DeYoung, Branderhorst, any discussions, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member of any other business you'd like to have addressed this evening?
I just wanted to thank everyone after the last meeting and with imposing planning, spoke about developing a governance, and Mandy and myself are happy to report that we have had one face-to-face meeting and multiple over-the-phone meetings and have set a goal, a pretty lofty goal, I think, of having something in front of the council by October. Anything else? I think that covers it. Thank you, and thanks to the public for reaching out and being there in support of this.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with that. It seems like about every time I turn around, well, not, but frequently, I get asked why the Kiwanis Courts are just sitting there. So, I had pickleball people, tennis people, say how much they appreciated those courts and use in our parks, use of our parks. So, that has come up again, and pickleball people, and there were up four of these people saying, please don't put pickleball courts in the sports complex southeast. I don't know, for those of you who have played pickleball, but I've played pickleball in very windy places when I was in Essent in the Ruhr, and you do not want to play pickleball in places where it is windy. And it's always windy east of town. So, I'm sharing this comment that I've gotten from pickleball people. And almost hate to bring this up, but it was brought to me saying, can we have a brush pickup, you know, chopper thing when we have a windstorm? And this came from mostly a couple ladies that don't saw branches and stuff. So, I'll just throw that up because that was asked to you. But I mean, it can be a problem, people that don't have saws and lockers, and I know this doesn't happen real often, but it is, it is a problem for people that don't have the ability, you know, elderly ladies or someone that don't have a spouse or don't want to rent a chainsaw and that sort of thing. So, throwing this out.
I would respond to the pickleball discussion. At our last meeting, we approved three hundred thousand dollar investment in pickleball courts at Central College. But also, as part of that discussion, we talked a lot about some, we started a review of future pickleball needs. And so, the courts at Kiwanis are unusable at this moment, so it can't be used. But I think that needs to be part of the bigger discussion about with a twenty-year or plan in mind, the Central College pickleball, having twelve courts there, it's going to be a big, big help for a while, but yes, we need to keep having a conversation about, with some facts. Let's have some facts about how many pickleball courts we actually need in the community outside size, and I, so I think that's, we will continue here. Someone needs to take that, Janette will do that, review it, yes.
One of the persons that approached me said, the other time that they said, when I was trying to get on a court, there were twelve people waiting. So, that came up. No, sir.
Okay, anything else?
Mayor, I would just like to say the pickleball discussion is scheduled for August twentieth, so we were planning on talking about both the Kiwanis Court and the analysis on needs of pickleball in the community.
Good, and I would add one other thing that Mike Mardini mentioned or told me that in September, we're going to talk about water problems in town, drainage. And we really enjoyed eight inches of rain in two days. And what is that, two hundred year rain or three hundred? I can't remember.
I think you're using the word enjoyed a little loose there. Rain was needed, but not that much that fast.
But not twelve, but twelve, fourteen inches in about two, three weeks.
Yeah, that was a lot of water.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Enjoyed.
All right, this is an opportunity for you out there to, if you have a comment you'd like to make to the city council, now's the time. If you want to do that, please step forward to microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Who's in charge? There we go.
Hi, I'm Brenda McBarrett, calling Franklin Street. I already know this is more than three minutes, about five minutes, field of need to stop me after three, I've got a daughter here that can finish reading it. Okay, I'd like to start this evening with a story. It's a true story that happened right here in Pella about eighteen years ago. We had purchased a home on Franklin Street in February. In May of that same year, we had a large rainfall in a short period of time. It was during the night. We had just finished off our basement, drew drywall, carpet, furniture, and made an ice bedroom with an egress window for my stepsister who was living with us. Her name was Amy, and she had Down syndrome. Our youngest daughter had just moved back from college and was in another bedroom in our basement. In the middle of the night, we are awakened by a phone call from our daughter, her exact words, "Mom, there's three feet of water down here. Stuff is floating all over, and I'm stuck in my bed, and I don't know what to do." My husband and I jumped out of bed, went down the steps, but stopped short because the water was well up the steps. We looked at each other, my husband said, "I don't know if it's safe to step in, will we get electrocuted?" I saw no other choice, knowing Amy was in the far bedroom, so I stepped in and waited to her room. She was on her bed, curled up in a ball, crying and confused. There was no way she was going to get into that water, so I opened her egress window, put her on my back, and got her out the window to safety. We didn't know what was happening, as we walked by the bathroom, we saw water shooting a foot into the air from the toilet. No doubt, it was going to get much deeper. We ended up calling a plumber in the middle of the night, asking him to bring pumps to start pumping out our basement. It was a nightmare. Material damage was bad enough, tens of thousands of dollars, a summer spent cutting the basement, bleaching, and attempting to clean up the wet mess. But compared to what might have happened had our daughter not been home from college to notice that the water that was poured into our basement and what might have happened to Amy, she very possibly could have drowned. That's not an exaggeration. In the aftermath of cleanup, we discovered that the water was pouring in through the sanitary sewer. Why, we asked? The answer from the city, because people are pumping basement. People are pumping, sorry, mark paper, there are subpumps and tile water, tile water into the sanitary sewer. Is that allowed, we asked? The answer was a resounding no. City code does not allow it, but it's not enforced. I could get no good answers. The city would not stand behind any of the damage we'd incurred. Insurance would only pay up to ten thousand. As the city could give us no assurance that it wouldn't happen again, we ended up happy to have our concrete tore up on our basement floor and a system put in with flaps and a gate that we could use in the event the sewer ever tried to back up again. We also had an additional pit that the pump put in, and in case that's, in case the system we had installed failed, along with a five thousand dollar generator to run the pump in case the electric run went out. We weren't going to have it happen again. Because of the thousands of dollars we spent, we've been able to keep this from happening in our basement again. We have literally seen the manhole cover for the sanitary sewer system about a half block from our home blown out, along with the concrete around it, lifted up and moved from the force of water coming from the sanitary sewer, with the sewer water dumping all over the street. Not okay. Actually, if I remember correctly, the EPA got involved and told the city they had to take care of this. You can't have sewage spill it out onto your streets. I was told by the city that they asked for a time extension from the EPA. I was also told that eventually, they did correct the problem. How, I asked? I was told they got rid of a bottleneck in the sewer system and that the problem for us should be resolved. This was a few years ago. Fast forward to a week ago when we had all the rainfall. We were keeping an eye on things, as once you've had this happen, you always live in fear of it happening again. We also looked down the street and saw that there was sewer water pouring out from the manhole again. And sure enough, the sewer was starting to back up. We had to put our gate down to keep it from backing up into our basement, but that's exactly what it would have done. Problem not fixed. Do realize, when the gate is down, sewage can't back up into your house, and sewage could also not leave your house. No toilet flushing, showering, or watering water. Our basement stayed dry. But then I got a call from our renter on West First Street, just south of the college. They had six inches of water in the basement. We have owned that home for over twenty years and never had a drop of water in the basement. Found out it was coming up from the sewer. Had to install a sub pump and start pumping out water, another big task to deal with. Our renter, who works for Central College, the housekeeping department, said they were also having water back up at Central College. They even have a wet mess to clean up. Her words, there was even poop that backed up into the showers. There is one way to fix this problem, and it's not fixing bottlenecks in the system, it's by starting to enforce the code already on the books and make people stop pumping their rainwater into the sanitary sewer system. It's not meant to handle that volume of liquid. We talked about spending money on infrastructure. What is infrastructure? In a nutshell, it's the basic necessary needs for a community to function properly and safely. Fancy amenities for the wealthier residents of Pella to enjoy does not fit the definition. Ensuring that your taxpaying citizens in the older parts of town are safe but not exposed to the devastation of a home flood is taking care of the city's infrastructure. It's a need. The problem goes way beyond the material damage it causes. What if our daughter hadn't been from home from college to call us about the impending danger in our basement? What if someone has a small child sleeping in their basement or a pet trapped in a kennel or a cage? This is a safety issue also. This is a matter of doing what's right and protecting the citizens, especially children of this community. If you think fixing this problem is costly, wait till the city gets a lawsuit because a child or someone like Amy has gotten hurt or ever drowned. Think it can happen? It nearly did for us, but for the grace of God. I hope this story helps you to see more clearly the reality that the sewer system in Pella's infrastructure should no longer be neglected. It's glamorous and exciting to build new things, but this has, but this can has been continually kicked down the road. No more. I request that you acknowledge that this is a critical true infrastructure needing. You vote to your neighbors the time, attention, and city resources to be resolved. I know of fact, other towns have done this. We can too. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our policy.
I want to make a comment. I have a.
Can you please come to the mic and make your comment?
I'm going to vote at nine one five Elm Street, and I have a manhole in my backyard. And when we have rains like that, it drains all of downtown, but I have a fountain in my backyard, and it comes out of the sanitary sewer. Sometimes it go on for half an hour.
Okay, anyone else?
Can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
Brenda? Thank you. I had a little bit of PTSD, I have to say, when you were reading that, because water flooding into anything is very emotional. You have a complete loss of control, just as my husband and myself, because we were pumping out eighteen thousand square feet of water out of our business by times already this spring. Danny has been extremely helpful and is as frustrated as the rest of us and more than willing to look at situation. I appreciate you bringing that forward because it is a very emotional issue. It's one that I, I heard John say we're going to address in August, and I, I agree with you and I applaud you for your eloquently written piece from a firsthand perspective. Thank you for taking the time.
You know, I think we have to be heads up on this. You described the majority of the problem very eloquently. It's with property owners and what they are doing with water at a big rainy event. And to poke the bear, it's going to impact a lot of property owners to straighten it out. At the same time, we're looking at the lead, water pipes.
Okay? All right, well, anyone else? All right, we'll move into our policy and planning. First item for discussion is proposed Mullen Grodd monthly parking pass rate increase.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as the council recalls during the recent budget deliberations that we had for this year, we talked about the city had several rates, user rates, rental rates, that we'd like to discuss potential rate increases for the city of Pella. The reason why we're having these discussions is recently, the state of Iowa's passed property tax legislation, property tax reform in the city, and the gist of it was, with the difficulties of funding items in the general fund due to the property tax limitations, we take a look at user rates for the city. One of the user rates that we have this evening is to talk about rental rates in the city's parking garage, that would be underneath the Mullen Grodd. Now, the current rate for parking the Mullen Grodd for a pass holder of monthly rental rates, fifty dollars. And looking at this, we believe that rate could be increased, and specifically since there wasn't another underground parking garage in close proximity, what we looked at was just what, what goes for typically when people store their cars at a storage unit. And roughly the going rate, we believe, is somewhere right around eighty-five dollars a month on it. And what we're proposing is to increase the rental rates at the Mullen Grodd up to eighty-five dollars, and that would be effectively about a year from now, on July first, two thousand twenty-five, but it'd be phased in. First increase would go from fifty dollars up to sixty-seven fifty on January first. The second increase would go up to the full eighty-five dollars on July first of two thousand twenty-five. Now, this is the initial discussion on this, on this matter, so what we're looking for this evening is guidance from the council on this proposed rate increase for parking at the Mullen Grodd.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
I'm curious, you probably know, Mayor, are most of those spots full all the time or are some available?
Do you know, Mike?
Brian, would you like to answer that question?
I think we were looking at, they're all leased.
Yeah, I think there is a waiting list for.
Yeah, I think there was like two or three people on that list in the spreadsheets, but yeah, the rest are all leased.
So, the original, the reason there, this parking lot exists is, there used to be a car dealership here, and there was eighty-some parking spots, parking lot. So, when this whole project was conceived and built, the idea was to do it without losing any parking. And so, that's why the underground parking garage came into existence, but in some cases, it's become a storage facility for cars that just sit there month after month. And fifty dollars a month is really cheap storage facility for an environmentally controlled parking. And so, I brought this up, I pay a month, I, I get it all in there monthly, and I think we need to increase the price of the park there. I mean, it's been twenty, twenty-two years also since that place was built, so.
Well, I just, I just signed a parking space lease in, for my daughter, on open lot, parking lot off of campus for seventy-five months a month, so the eighty-five, it still seems like a deal.
Pretty tough.
Great location.
Yeah. Can I ask a question? I've been paying for five spaces for twenty-some years. Question is, is the city going to pay for the spaces that it uses? There are several spaces that have lawn mowers and more barricades in front of them. Are they all being used and paid for, or is that an opportunity to generate the revenue that you're looking for?
Yeah, I mean, I normally go down there and get water and stuff like that for some of the parks, parks are, I think most of those are in the, there's, there's eight metered stalls down there that are metered, you know, I don't know what it is, twenty-five cents an hour, whatever it is, I don't know what it is. Rest, the, this is the lease, these are the monthly lease stalls, which, as it says, there's sixty-seven of those.
Sounds like it's a deal, Brandon.
I think it is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the proposed solid waste rate increase.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, we're just continuing the discussion that we had during the recent budget process, which will be for the current fiscal year. During work sessions, we talked about the need to increase solid waste fees by ten percent. What we have is a proposed increase to the city's solid waste fees, and you can see that they range from small tote of a dollar twenty-six up to the largest tote of a dollar eighty-four that we have here as well with the ten percent increase. Now, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. As far as the other items that are associated with the solid waste utility effect that we have here, we have a monthly recycling, not only our recycling program, our yard waste program, and what we're proposing is increases that would be just offset the cost of the program here. So, we do have proposed increases for yard waste bags, as well as yard seeder programs, and then in addition, we are proposing an increase for, through replaced recycle bins as well. Those are all just based off the cost of the city of Pella. So, Mandy, let's go ahead and cover the final item that we have. It's important to note through this process, we also discovered that the environmental service fee, the way the ordinance reads, should be charged to all customers within the city of Pella, both commercial and residential. And for a few years, it's only been charged to commercial property owners. So, what we want to make sure council is aware of is in September of two thousand twenty-four, we will be charging all customers, as the ordinance says, for the actual dollar. Now, what the intent of this was, there's a number of special events that take place during summer activities for the city of Pella, actually, spring, summer, and fall. And what the intent of the ordinance was, is there's additional cleanup that incur expenses by the city's general fund. And so, the intent of the ordinance was to transfer the funds that was, that was collected from this fee to the city's general fund on it as well, and that has occurred, we just haven't collected it from residential customers, is what the ordinance reads as well. So, that was the intent of the, of the dollar fee when it was enacted. So that was the intent of the, of the dollar fee when it was enacted initially by council. But once again, Mandy, if we could go back to our chart on proposed increase, please. Again, for the solid waste tote fee, we'd be looking at a dollar twenty-six for a small tote, all the way up to a dollar eighty-four for a large tote per customer. Before we presented this for formal consideration to council, we just wanted to make sure we addressed any questions that council may have on this proposed rate increase.
Okay, input for Mike?
What, what does this do across the board? What's this add? Total, I don't know.
Uh, Brian, would you like to answer that question?
Can you clarify a little bit more, Dave, or?
Just basically, based on the totes that we have out there, this rate increase goes through. What does that add to the annual revenue?
I will have to get back to you on the number of totes left.
Yeah, I can go ahead, you know, just to, the memory correction, I may be incorrect on this, but I think the annual revenue is about five hundred and fifty thousand is in the dollar fund, Brian. So the ten percent increase off the totes would be about fifty-five to sixty thousand.
And then that environmental fee goes up and down with this?
Yeah, and what, what that would do, Councilmember Beller and then Councilmember Hopkins, these are both very good questions. The environmental fee would be about sixty thousand by itself, the actual dollar. I mean, somewhere about fifty, fifty, fifty-five thousand in total. That would be transferred to the city's general fund for a full year's worth of collection.
But on the increase, would that be another dollar increase or is it like a dollar fifty, two hundred and sixty-five?
Yeah, but this would happen with, the totes would go up a dollar twenty-six and a dollar eighty-four off the fee increase. But as luck would have it, we'd also have the correction to the billing that's occurred for most residential customers. So from a residential standpoint, what it's going to feel like if you have a small tote is a dollar twenty-six for this, plus a dollar of a residential. So it'd be two twenty-six and two dollars and eighty-four cents for a large tote.
When was the ordinance for the dollar fee passed?
That was originally sometime in the early two thousands. I would say, I think right around two thousand one, two thousand two.
And it's never been charged for residential?
I wouldn't say never. It hasn't been recently on that from what we've been told. So this is just, this is what we consider a correction. The original intent was to reimburse the city for the costs that would incur for specialty beds that are expensed out of the general fund.
Yeah, I'm looking at this ordinance from two thousand eleven, where fees were saved, where they set fees, so I think it's probably, probably about thirteen years.
We had a really good run.
Okay, any other comments? All right, last on the list, nuisance abatement assessments.
Okay, I'll give, I'll give a shot at this one, Mr. Mayor, but I may have to call the city attorney to help explain this item. What we're here to talk about this evening is in cases where we get complaints, we've talked about a few of them, there was mention about a property that had some tall grass on it and weeds and so on. Usually what we do is we try to work with property owners when they're not complying with city code. And particularly when you, most of our code enforcement, I'm going to say, we're very lucky in the community. We don't have a lot of, we're not, have problems with this. But when we do, a lot of times, a good example would be tall grass, or during snowstorms, someone doesn't shovel their sidewalk. What happens in the city is we typically receive complaints from the neighboring property owners, or we even notice it that we go through and we work with the property owner and try to rectify it. So we give them a chance to correct it. Oftentimes, it's a staff member that goes up and informs them of the violation. And hopefully, you know, most of the time it's taken care of, just that is. Occasionally, it does not get taken care of. And what happens is it sets off a series of procedures where we start going through formal notices to the property owner before the city takes an abatement action on it. And a lot of the times, a good example of this is in the case of tall grass. If we just get ignored from city staff, we will hire a firm that goes out and mows the property for them. We've had to do that a few times this year. One of the items that we've had, and we haven't taken this in previous years, but when people not only ignore us on it, don't take care of the abatement, we have to perform it. A lot of times, those same people don't want to pay the invoice that we incurred for the expense of it.
All, probably, for sure.
So what we'd like to do with this, just in summary, is we'd like to continue to abate nuisances, to take care of those problems. But in the case where a property owner says, well, the city took care of it, and that's the city's issue, and it's the city's cost, and they ignore us on the payment, we'd like to go ahead and assess the property for the city's cost of doing the abatement on it. And to oversimplify matters, it's for those invoices that people refuse to pay, what would happen? And we didn't correct me. But at a minimum, we have a certifying action at the city council. There may be even a public hearing requirement. And there's, there may be even the potential that we'd have to publish a notice in paper identifying the noncompliant property owners as well. But before we started this, and we just view this as an enhanced collection method for the city of Pella, before we started this procedure, we wanted to make sure we addressed any questions that the council may have on it. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that's what we're here to see guidance on this evening.
I, I make a practice of roaming around the community. Drives my wife around, she never knows how long it's going to take me to run a hair. We definitely have more properties that fall in the nuisance category than we used to. I'm asking the question, what's going on? You know, I'm sure there are people out there that don't care. That's always been the case. But I'm also wondering whether we have people who are aging out and kept up their property in the past that can't physically or financially do that anymore. It seems to me that maybe there ought to be a step in here where we ask what's going on before we slam them down on something like generating a bill. If it's an elderly person that simply can't do it anymore, maybe can't afford it, maybe we have to talk about how we address that.
Yeah, because I know an elderly lady, when she asked somebody to mow it, she found out it was fifty dollars, and they wanted to mow it every week. And sometimes the grass doesn't grow very much in a week. And she was, I think, eighty-five years old. Well, in this case, her son decided to move back to the area. So the problem was solved. It doesn't always happen. So fifty dollars a week, when you're on, doesn't need to be mowed every week. It's a lot of money for, I don't know the income of this lady.
A lot of people are trying to revan their homes. Definitely a trend.
Just to clarify, the types of calls that we usually get, it's code enforcement, aren't necessarily, I would clarify. I don't think there's borderline cases. And borderline cases, what we hold our status, exercise some judgment on the matter. So when we go out and talk to people, these are clear violations of matters. And it's not, I believe Jerry, grass limitations, city of Pella, eight inches? We're not talking about eight and a half tall grass on it. So these are unsightly, and they're usually on the other side of it. Is we get complaints from neighboring property owners demanding action. And usually, you know, just the way this process works, it's not something where the city goes out, talks to a property owner, then generates a letter, and then the next day we're out mowing the property. This doesn't work this way. Usually, it's just the office that we, the complaints, why aren't we doing anything? And it takes longer than what you think by the time we call the mowing company to take care of the matter.
I, I see a number of nineteen on this list. All ponds or pools containing stank water for seventy-two hours or longer. And we got, we got, I think everybody got this letter out of pond or a pile of hard. Got an algae for one guy. Must be stagnant. So, you know, nuisance right there. So, and it's been that way for a while, because we've heard from Mr. Russo before.
Well, once again, before we start, because we have two issues here. You have the code enforcement, what I call the abatement issues, and these aren't borderline cases that we're talking about. And then two, we have the property owners that if we go out and take care of the problem, the mention of the fifty dollars amounts, our contract's a little bit higher than that. What happens is the general taxpayer is paying for that cost. And so with it, what we'd like to do is go back and assess those costs to the property owner. Hopefully, they can rectify that. And if we want to have a discussion on code enforcement, general code enforcement, that's different than what we're talking about here on issues that I'd say true nuisances that we're talking about.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Another thing that, I think, in a particular incident in Ward One, where we had a property owner who sat staked in a site out of mine. And I've been very grateful when I called in the city and the city's bank that gave me that. And I believe you do build the property on that particular place. But, you know, we do have to have some sort of fallback. And every time I have worked with Jerry's department, they are so kind to, if it's a residential environment, they will speak with the homeowner, they will report back to me, and they are so discreet in the way that they handle it. I think that, to your point, we're dealing with really egregious violations that are on the corridors sometimes of our community and really need to take it to the top. And in that case, I think it should be used.
Okay, anyone, anything else?
Tell me, huh?
I believe so. Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Hopkins, Brandon Horst, all in favor, please say yes. Provo, no, maybe please call and roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Ian Franks?
Yes.
Motion passed, we are adjourned.